Okay, it's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to order. If you would stand, please, for a moment of silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Our first item is to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting held on March the 9th. Anyone have any changes to the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve them as submitted?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Guster. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. For all of our items on the agenda tonight, we will have a public comment period. So if you're interested in any particular item, you will certainly have an opportunity to comment at that time. However, we also have a general comment period at the beginning of the meeting, so if anyone has any general comments they'd like to make, now's the time to do it. And seeing none, we'll proceed with the agenda. Our first item is a request to find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, and recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from T. Transitional District to RSF-1B Residential Single Family Large Lot District for the property owned by Citrus Ridge Real Estate, LLC, and located at 202 South Binion Road. And we have a staff report.
Good evening. Allison Williams, Planner One with the City's Planning Division. The applicant is requesting to rezone a 19.11 acre parcel from T. Transitional to RSF-1B Residential Single Family Large Lot. The subject property is located at 202 South Binion Road. It was annexed into the city on December 4th, 2004. The applicant intends to develop 24 single-family units on the property. DRC recommends approval, staff recommends approval, and the staff and the applicant are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, does the petitioner have a presentation? Okay, and seeing none, we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to find a proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, and recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from T. Transitional District to RSF-1B Residential Single Family Large Lot District for the property owned by Citrus Ridge Real Estate, LLC, and located at 202 South Binion Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second?
No.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a quasi-judicial item for the commission's consideration. It's a request to approve a special exception to allow an assisted living facility, ALF, in the CC Community Commercial Zoning District for the property owned by Marshall Howard and located at 1265 Rock Springs Road. And since this is quasi-judicial, I would ask if anyone in the audience seeks affected party status for this item. And seeing none, I would ask commission members if they've had any ex parte communications on this item.
No, sir.
Okay, and seeing none, we'll proceed with the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Last month, a special exception was approved on the two properties to the north here for a 70,000-square-foot assisted living facility. A couple of days later, it was determined that this piece of property was not included in the special exception approval, and that's why we're here tonight, to seek approval for the special exception on the subject property. Staff and the applicant are here for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff?
No, sir.
Okay, thanks. Does the petitioner have a presentation? And seeing none, we'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And sir, if you would come up and give us your name and address for the record, please. I guess he does not.
He doesn't want to.
Okay, in that case, we will close the public hearing, open, and bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve the special exemption to allow the assisted living facility in the Community Commercial Zoning District for the property owned by Marshall Howard located at 1265 Rock Springs Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Guster. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Norwood. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a request to find a proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend transmittal of the future land use map designation from residential very low suburban, that's max two dwelling units per acre, to industrial, max .6 FAR, to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for the property owned by Nancy Mann Trust and located at 444 Hermit Smith Road. And we have a staff presentation.
Good evening. Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of the Nancy Mann Trust Future Land Use Amendment from residential very low suburban to industrial. The proposed project, or I'm sorry, the proposed project site is approximately 78.9 acres located south of Hogshead Road, I'm sorry, located south of Hogshead Road and west of Hermit Smith Road. A request to assign a future land use designation of industrial is compatible with the designations assigned to abutting properties. The applicant is also applying for a rezoning, which is IL, Light Industrial, compatible with the proposed industrial future land use, which is the next item on the agenda. Ariel shows the properties within an area with a mix of industrial and agricultural uses. The DRC recommends transmittal of the change in future land use, and the recommended motion is to recommend transmittal of the future land use map amendment from residential very low suburban to industrial to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, thanks. And does the petitioner have a presentation? But is available to answer questions. Any questions of the applicant? Okay, we'll close the presentations, bring it back to, well, we'll open the public hearing first. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend transmittal of the change in future land use from residential very low suburban, max two dwelling units per acre, to industrial, max 0.6 floor area ratio for the property owned by Nancy Mann Trust and located at 444 Hermit Smith Road.
In the motion that you now to transmit it to the Florida Department of Commerce, Department of Economic Transportation, let me just read the recommended motion and see if it is the motion. It's to find a proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend transmittal of the future land use map designation from residential very low suburban to industrial to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. I think the motion you were reading was possibly for the next item.
Is that what printed?
No, it's printed on the page.
Oh, okay. I guess I'm, maybe I'm reading the wrong thing.
I said, I thought it was what was in front of me, but I might have turned the page.
This is the, this is the item three.
Right.
Legislative public hearing.
Right.
For the large-scale land use.
Right.
I think you have the teacher version. We have the student version here, Jim.
Oh.
That's exactly what she read and what it said.
Sorry, not sure that was the appropriate for that one. But we'll accept your motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. And the second by Commissioner Ryan. Any discussion, other than the fact that we have different interpretations of the motion?
How many are we up to now, five?
Maybe. Okay, in that case, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Do we have two versions of a motion? One looks at one and one looks at another, I guess.
I usually just read what...
Yeah. Okay, our next item for the same property is a request to find a proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, and recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from RSF-1A Single Residential Single Family Estate to District IL Light Industrial District for the property owned by Nancy Mann Trust and located at 444 Hermit Smith Road. And we have a staff presentation.
As previously mentioned, this item is related to the preceding item, the future land use amendment. This is the rezoning. The proposed is light industrial IL zoning, which is compatible with the property due to the IL zoning being found in the vicinity. DRC recommends approval of the proposed change of zoning, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from RSF-1A Residential Single Family Estate to IL Light Industrial District. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff? And I guess the participant doesn't have a presentation but is available for questions. Any questions of the petitioner? In that case, we'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to find a proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, and recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from RSF-1A District to 1L District for the property owned by Nancy Mann Trust and located at 444 Hermit Smith Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second?
One second.
Second by Commissioner Guster. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? And seeing none, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a request to find a proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the request to apply the future land use designation of mixed use, that's zero to 15 dwelling units per acre and 1.0 FAR, for the property owned by PMDW Ventures, LLC, and located at 2600 Peterson Road. And we have a staff presentation.
For the record, Jean Sanchez, again with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of the PMDW Venture Small Scale Future Land Use Amendment. Property is located just south of Peterson Road and east of State Road 414. This request applies to the northern portion of the property comprising 9.84 acres. The city's future land use map shows that the subject property has an existing future land use designation of mixed use. However, during a title search, no documentation was found that a mixed use future land use designation was approved on the property. To correct the discrepancy, the applicant requests the mixed use future land use designation be formally reapproved on the subject property. The applicant has provided a capacity enhancement approval letter from Orange County Public Schools for the proposed development on this parcel, and it would include the entire property you see here, as well as this portion right here for the development, which will come before this panel in the future. The current designation of the entire property is mixed use East Shore Gateway Sub District and is compatible with the mixed use future land use designation. DRC recommends approval of the proposed amendment. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the request to apply the future land use designation of mixed use for the property owned by PMDW Ventures, subject to the findings of the staff report. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff?
I have a question. It says here there is an adjacent piece of property, 3.7 acres, which is not part of this application, but is also owned by the applicant. At a future date, will this come back to our attention?
Yes, sir. That's right. At a future date, the development plan will comprise of these two parcels right here, this small parcel and this larger parcel.
So that small piece at the top there is the 3.7?
Yes.
Okay, other questions? And does the applicant have a presentation or just available for questions? Okay, any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. We'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? Sir, if you would come up and give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Chuck Ebersole. I live at 2532 Peterson Road. When we received this public hearing notice, all we got was something that showed the blacked-out area of the 38 acres previously owned by Coca-Cola, and that 3.8 acres that had been owned by another company prior to that. And today was the first time we'd seen anything about where those nine acres was going to be located. It was up for public review. So my official notice that I've got shows this big forty-some acres, but doesn't show the nine acres. And so I had to come down here to find out where exactly this was going to be designated, because I'm right next on the east side of the property line, right there, and I didn't have any idea how it was going to impact me. So I'm kind of, I was kind of confused about the notice and a little bit about exactly what the plans are. Did I hear something said about school? Or was it going to be cleared through us, through the school system? Or what did I hear? Exactly what is the property going to be intended to be used for? This mixed use designation doesn't mean anything to the average guy. I have no idea what the city was going to do.
And a lot of that will come in the, in the, in future phases of this, but I see this person's walking behind you, and I'm, let's see what she can add to it. And stay up if you have further questions.
So if I get this correctly, the question was, what was the plans for this property? Currently, the Development Review Committee is reviewing a subdivision plan that includes 200 units with a mix of single-family and townhomes.
Okay. Now, that hadn't been, has that been formally submitted to the city?
A formal application has been submitted. It's being reviewed right now. It hasn't been approved by DRC as of yet.
Okay. All right, very good. And so does that answer your question, or do we? Some of the detail on what they're actually proposing will be in another phase of this. Okay, is that, okay. All right, anyone else wish to appear before the commission on this item? And we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the request to apply the future land use designation of mixed use, zero to 15 dwelling units per acre and 1.0 FAR for the property owned by PMDW Ventures, LLC, subject to the findings of this staff report.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a request to find the proposed change of zoning, master slash major development plan, consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from T. Transitional District to MU KPI, Kelly Park Interchange District Mixed Use, and assign the transition overlay district, and approve the master major development plan based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits. And we have a staff report.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Phil Martinez, Planner Two with the City's Planning Division. The applicant is proposing a rezoning from T. Transitional District to MU KPI, Kelly Park Interchange District Mixed Use, with a transition overlay along with a master plan and major development plan. The subject property is highlighted in yellow and comprises of an estimated 35.56 acres. The surrounding area consists of residential and agricultural properties, along with Golden Gem Road to the east and West Kelly Park Road to the north. The property is zoned Transitional District, and in accordance with the Kelly Park Interchange Form Base Code, the applicant is requesting Kelly Park Interchange District zoning with a transition overlay. The subject property has mixed use future land use, which is compatible with the proposed Kelly Park Interchange District zoning. The master major development plan shows 165 single-family lots, with 50-foot-wide lots being along the exterior, and 32-foot wide lots being located in the interior. The proposed minimum living area is 1,250 square feet. Access, access to the site is proposed off of the east adjacent Golden Gem Road, with two future access points being proposed, one at Sadler Road to the south, and the other access point, a future access point being proposed at the northwestern end of the development. The applicant has provided 10.4 acres of open space, where 5.33 acres is required. This open space includes a dog park, landscape buffers, and a community pool and clubhouse. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the proposed rezoning to Kelly Park Interchange Form Base, to, sorry, to Kelly Park Interchange District Mixed Use, along with the recommending approval of the master major development plan. And the recommended motion for this evening is to find the proposed change of zoning, master major development plan, consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from T. Transitional District to MU KPI, Kelly Park Interchange District Mixed Use, and to assign the transition overlay district, and to approve the master major development plan based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits. This concludes my presentation, and the staff, and the applicant and I are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, thanks. Any questions of the applicant, or does the applicant wish to make a presentation? Okay, no questions. All right, very good. We'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Norwood. Is there a second?
No, sir.
Second by Commissioner Guster. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is another quasi-judicial item. It's a request to approve a special exception to allow outdoor storage as a principal use in the IL Light Industrial District for the property owned by Chori Holdings I, LLC, and located at 3723 Hogshead Road and 3636 Fudge Road. And since it's quasi-judicial, I would ask if anyone in the audience requests affected party status. And seeing none, I would ask commission members if anyone had had ex parte communications on this item.
No, sir.
Okay, and hearing none, we'll proceed with the staff presentation.
For the record, Phil Martinez, Planner Two with the City's Planning Division. The applicant is proposing a special exception for outdoor storage as a principal use in the IL Light Industrial District. The subject properties are highlighted in yellow and located west of Hermit Smith Road and north of Hogshead Road. To the west are industrial and agricultural properties. To the north is a railroad and West Orange Blossom Trail. To the east are residential properties, and to the south is Hogshead Road. The property is currently zoned IL Light Industrial District, where outdoor storage as a principal use requires a special exception. Attached to the staff report are the special exception review standards, as stated in Section 2.5.1 in the Land Development Code. The applicant is proposing to store construction materials, construction equipment, and operable semi-trucks outdoors, and future development of buildings will require a development plan review. Attached to the staff report are the three proposed special exception conditions of approval. And this slide is the screening height standards that are proposed as part of the special exception conditions of approval. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the special exception, and the recommended motion for this evening is to approve a special exception to allow outdoor storage as a principal use in the IL Light Industrial District at 3723 Hogshead Road and 3636 Fudge Road, subject to the conditions of approval and findings of the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I are happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff? Any questions of the applicant? Nope. Okay, thanks. We'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the special exemption to allow outdoor storage as a principal use in the Light Industrial District for property owned by Chori Holdings, LLC, located at 3723 Hogshead Road and 3636 Fudge Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Guster. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? And hearing none, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a request to find a Nottingham Major Development Plan, consistent with the land development code and the comprehensive plan. consistent with the land development code and the comprehensive plan, and recommend approval of the major development plan subject to a right-turn lane eating into the site from Poncon Road being provided on the plans prior to presentation of the major development plan to the city council. May I have a staff presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Property is located at 3515 to 3081 Poncon Road, and is approximately 23.4 acres in size. Major development plan proposes the construction of a 46-lot single-family subdivision. Aerial shows the location of the property. And the major development plan proposes 46 lots. The property will be zoned to RSF-1B, minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, minimum lot width of 75 feet, setbacks, front yard 25, side 10, and rear of 25 feet. Access to the subdivision is via Poncon Road. Two public streets are proposed within the development. Stormwater retention is proposed on Track C, which is back here on the northern portion of the property. Per the requirements of the Land Development Code, 20% of the site is reserved for open space. Landscape buffer will be provided along Poncon Road and adjacent to the ag zone property that is here. The Development Review Committee recommends approval, and staff recommends approval, and staff and the applicant are here for questioning. The motion should be that the major development plan is approved subject to a right-turn lane being provided leading into the site from Poncon Road. So the right-turn lane would be required here on the plan before the plan goes to city council.
Okay, very good. Any questions of staff?
Is there a left-turn lane for people going eastbound?
Yes, sir, there will be a left-turn lane provided going here into the site from Poncon Road.
Okay, and does the applicant have a presentation? And if not, go ahead, sir, if you'd like. And again, if you'd give us your name and address for the record.
Luke Klassen, Appian Engineering, 2221 Lee Road, Warden Park, Florida, 32789. Just a clarification, for the right-turn lane, my client has no problem providing the right-turn lane, but that road isn't Orange County road, so we just want to make sure that provided, Orange County allows it. If they don't allow it, there's not much we can do. But right now, it looks like they're going to allow it, so I don't think we'll have a problem. I just want to, I don't want this approval contingent on that, and then Orange County come back and say, "We don't allow it," and then we're stuck.
Okay, well, it's, the recommended condition from the staff is that there be a left-turn lane, is that correct?
No, right turn. The left turn is already going to be provided with the development across the street.
Okay, well, that is the, okay, that's the staff recommended.
The right turn is required per the Apocrypha Code, and we're fine adhering to that. We have applied to Orange County, we just don't have a confirmation they're going to allow it. I don't see it being issued, but don't.
Okay. All right, any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find the Nottingham major development plan consistent with the land development code and comprehensive plan, and recommend approval of the major development plan subject to a right-turn lane leading into the site from Poncon Road being provided on the plans prior to the presentation of the major development plan to the city council.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lorindo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ryan. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a request to find the Ramjit Estate Platte consistent with the land development code and recommend approval of the Ramjit Estate Platte. May I have a staff presentation?
Thank you, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. The applicant is requesting approval of a three-lot subdivision located at 2378 Marden Road. It's for a family that will live on the three lots. The platte meets the lot size requirements of the RSF-1B, and staff recommends approval, and DRC does as well.
All right, any questions of staff? Okay, does the petitioner have a presentation? And seeing none, we'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to find the Ramjit Estate Platte consistent with the land development code and recommend approval of the platte subject to the findings of this staff report for the property located at 2378 Marden Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Norwood. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And seeing none, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a request to find the retail at Rock Springs Road and Tanglewood Drive Platte consistent with the land development code and recommend approval of the platte subject to the findings of this staff report for the property owned by Unicorp Companies and located at 1752, 1760, 1774, and 1788 Rock Springs Road. May I have a staff presentation?
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of the platte for the retail at southwest corner of Rock Springs Road and Tanglewood Drive. The area of the property shows residential uses to the north, east, and commercial to the south. The Rock Springs retail platte proposes a combination of four parcels and subdividing it into three lots with a common area tract that will serve as cross-access, private drainage, private utility easement, and open space. A site plan for Lot 3 has been approved for retail use. DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to find the retail at Rock Springs Road and Tanglewood Drive Platte consistent with the land development code and recommend approval of the platte subject to the findings of the staff report. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff? And any questions of the applicant unless the applicant wishes to make a presentation? Okay, we'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to find the retail at Rock Springs Road and Tanglewood Drive Platte consistent with the land development code and recommend approval of the platte subject to the findings of the staff report. Property owned by Unicorp Companies and located at 1752, 1760, 1774, and 1788 Rock Springs Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Guster. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lorindo. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business? There being no further business to come before the commission will be adjourned.